...this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, held on July 15th at 6:00 PM at the Cottonwood Council Chambers Building. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Garrison.
Present.
Councilmember Howdige.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Piper.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here. Thank you very much. Tonight, for the Pledge of Allegiance, we have a member of our Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission to lead us in the pledge. Her name is Kaylee Gordon, and she will come up and share a little bit of information about herself and her accomplishments. So if you want to come up to the lectern?
Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members. My name is Kaylee Gordon. I'm a volleyball player at Mingus, and I'm a part of the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission here in Cottonwood.
All right. Well, welcome. So will you all please stand to say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a certificate for you. We just want to say thank you for your great contribution. We appreciate you. That's on behalf of the council members, we also appreciate you. You're welcome. Okay, our next item is a brief summary. Oh dear, I never noticed that before. It said "brief." Brief summary of current events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. City Manager?
And Mayor Councilmembers, we had estimated about four, about 5,000 people at the July event. It was a little off and on in terms of whether we were going to do fireworks because of the wind blowing, but fortunately we were able to get that off and going.
So it was a successful event. Also, this past weekend, our SWAT team was out giving assistance to the Sheriff's Department in search of the escapee from the jail who is considered a dangerous felon, and so they haven't had any success yet, but they continue to look. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
So as he's considered a dangerous felon, are there any words to the community of words of advice?
Yeah, just if they spot him, to call 911 right away and let him know not to approach you.
And don't pick up maybe strangers on the highway at this time?
It's a good idea, too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Council?
I'll give an update quickly on the historic home tour for Cottonwood, the inaugural home tour coming up November 8th.
November 8th.
I mentioned it before, but we're going to piggyback with Walking on Main, which is on November 8th, so it'll have the same hours as Walking on Main, which I believe is 11 to 5. And I met up with a designer today who's going to get the flyer together for us, so we'll be starting to notify all the communities in Verde Valley and northern Arizona and down in Phoenix as well of the event, so hopefully get some attention here and get some pre-ticket, pre-event sales.
Sounds like a lot of work, Tim.
It's a lot of work, yeah. And shortly, I'd like Ryan and I, Ryan Bigelow, he's also on the Historic Preservation Commission, to come in and give a presentation to Council.
Okay.
Let you know what we expect to draw and, you know, kind of give you some benchmarks for the event.
Okay, great. So it sounds like, as always, staff is helping, and we appreciate you all for the work that you do. You're always there, so that's appreciated. Vice Mayor, any updates on Matt Force, or?
No, we haven't had a meeting for a couple months for one reason or another, so no updates on Matt Force right now.
And I did see a press release that went out today sometime on Matt Force and its accomplishments that we'll probably see printed and...
And I forwarded that on to each of the council members, so they should have...
Once you check your email, it was really quite a list. So we would like to thank the Vice Mayor, who served on that committee for many years now, and of course, the City Manager, who is the co-chair, a co-chair of that group, for the work that they've done and the accomplishments that they've made. One more death of a youth in our community is just not acceptable. Okay, so I will start off my announcements with an announcement by the City Clerk, who wrote up this very nice little presentation. The City of Cottonwood will hold a special election on November 4th, 2014, for ratification of the approval of its General Plan 2025, which will appear as Proposition 433 on the ballot. Arguments for or against the proposition are due in the Cottonwood City Clerk's office, located at 824 North Main Street, Cottonwood, by 5:00 PM August 6th, 2014. A deposit of $125 is required for each argument. If you have any questions, you may contact the City Clerk at 928-340-2725. And I would say this would be a great news release for the newspaper and the radio station, so I'll leave that up to you.
Yes, I'll mail it out, Mayor, and I am also, that same notice will be published under the public notice section of the Verde Independent this coming Friday.
You have all kinds of requirements and dates that you have to meet to do all of this, so, okay. And then, so we have the arguments for or against the plan. On July 21st, or July 2nd, sorry, I spent, I spoke with Ruth Wicks, we had a meeting, and she'll be bringing information about her group to the Council in September. And her group, I believe, is called the Verde Valley Community College Advocacy Committee. So we will have a presentation. I think we're just kind of hearing from everyone on all the issues. I also read in the newspaper where James Perry is starting to put his committee together, so we'll have an agenda item coming up in our August meeting, and we'll just, I'll try to get all this stuff together for Council so that you can look at everything together. But they will be coming in September. So on Inside Cottonwood, we reviewed the Water Literacy for Kindergarteners program on, that can be seen on verdivallieTV.com, and we had Roger Biggs and Debbie Brightkreitz and Linda Heidenreich on the show, and as always, I really enjoy having staff on the show. They did a great job, and they're very committed to this program. On the 7th, we had a SciTech meeting, and we're full steam ahead for the March 2015 event. If anyone in the community would like to learn about the SciTech Festival, they can find out information at www.vvsciTech.org. I attended the Yavapai College Candidate Forum on Wednesday, the 9th, and there was a really nice turnout. I was really pleased to see that, because I had attended another event on the Governor's Candidates, and I was the only person in the building, so I was very pleased. These were District 6 candidates, and they were the state representatives and senators, because Tom O'Halloran was there also. So that was really excellent. I learned a lot just by listening and the questions and answers that were shared. On Thursday, the 10th, I traveled to Phoenix for the Governor's Council on Aging meeting, and I've been appointed Chair of the Mature Workforce Committee, and I had to miss the Friday official meeting because Cottonwood was hosting the A.D.O.T. Board. And we had dinner with the A.D.O.T. Board the night before, Councilmember Garrison, the Vice Mayor, and me. And the Vice Mayor had brought up issues with our representative, who is Deanna Beaver, is her name. And she, the Vice Mayor, shared with her that when there's an accident on I-17, how difficult that is. People get hung up on the highway, and they can't go. And so we were very pleased at the A.D.O.T. meeting on Friday, that Ms. Beaver, before the meeting ended, asked that they bring some information to the Board about this. You know, mostly it's, DPS really is the one that handles all of this, but they, the Board seemed to agree. They all wanted to understand this issue better. So I was really pleased about that, and I'd like to thank the Vice Mayor. And Councilmember Garrison brought up some issues with problems when there's an accident, say in Jerome, and there's no notification further out, and how people travel, and then they have to go back. So I'm sure that they took that into consideration also. On Friday, Linda Heidenreich, Ms. H2O, for the Water Literacy for Kindergartens Program, made a tiara for Debbie Brightkreitz from our wastewater department, and it was quite elaborate. And of course, the kindergartners know our wastewater superintendent as the queen of whoo. And so this tiara had, you know, toilet paper rolls on it, and it was very beautiful, but we had the best time. And Debbie is always such a great sport, and she has her own tiara t-shirt. So she gets into really, whatever the kindergartners say is fine with her. On Saturday, the 12th, it was my great honor to spend time with 25 young leaders from countries in Africa. And I just want the Council to know that our Economic Development Director, Casey Rooney, drove over here on a Saturday, spent the whole afternoon with these people. As far as I know, he doesn't get reimbursed for his gas. He may, I may be incorrect, but I just want you to know how dedicated he is. Almost every Saturday, he drives over here from his home in Prescott Valley to serve our community. And so some of the folks that we met, well, some of, there were 25, they're mostly young people, young leaders, and they're in a program with Arizona State University, a leadership program. But I'll just share a couple of the things that some of them are involved in in Africa and their countries within Africa. One is at the forefront of organizing a collaborative effort between civil society and government to advance transparency and accountability. Another is working to download Wikipedia for schools in, on the African continent within their countries. Another works in various grassroots communities. Another works to empower the youth in Tanzania. And they, a lot of them were working with young people. One was working with disabled residents and trying to help them. A lot of them are working with youth programs, but they were all very accomplished, and I really learned a lot from participating in that event. Let's see. I attended, in between all of that, I ran over to the Senior Center's Old Bags Event, and I want to thank Cindy B. Cindy B. from Old Town sponsored that. And so what happens is, all these ladies turn in purses that they don't want anymore, so they have these tables full of purses. And then you auction off these bags, and Elaine Brimner had a very nice lunch. So really what it is, is a fundraiser, and all of the money goes to Meals on Wheels program. So it was really, all the ladies are dressed up fancy and have fancy hats on, and it's a tea. So that was really a lot of fun. Then I ran downtown to meet with the youth leaders again when they arrived back here in town, and they really enjoyed Old Town. And we went to the tea, to the tea shop, and one of them said, "You know, if I lived in Cottonwood, this is where I would be most of the time." They love tea in Africa, I guess. That's a beverage of choice. Then in the evening, I was invited to attend a dinner at Orm School, and Orm School recently received quite a large grant from the Burpee Foundation. And there, actually Emerson Jones, who worked at Verde Valley Growers out on Rocking Chair Road, he's back to teaching biology there. And so they are, they're, they have this huge three-quarter acre garden now, and they're trying to, you know, they have more than 100 students, and they're trying to do all of the healthy nutrition, not only with their students, but they're creating a curriculum around this idea. So that was very interesting to learn all about that. I want to remind everyone that the farmers' markets have started behind City Hall, and there's fresh fruits and vegetables, baked goods, and art available, along with music every week. And it starts, it's Thursday night, it starts at 5:00 PM and lasts till dark. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July 16th, the Verde River Basin Partnership will be holding a field trip at the City of Cottonwood Yavapai College reclaimed water station, and I'll be sharing with them the many ways that Cottonwood conserves water. And if any council members would like to attend, you're certainly invited. And it starts about 10:45, I believe. On July 16th, at 4:30 PM, there will be a teen center meeting at the teen center itself at 4:30 PM. I talked to Kathy Wambacher today, and any community member or youth who would like to be involved should meet us there. That's tomorrow, which is Wednesday at 4:30. Also, at 6 o'clock tomorrow, which is Wednesday, there'll be the coffee talk, and it's going to be held in Rendezvous in Old Town, or Riot, as they call it, at 6:00 PM. And anybody's invited, Council, and the public are invited to attend that, that meeting. Also, on the 17th, at 5:00 PM, I've been working with Speak Out Arizona and Robin Prudhomme Bauer of the League of Women Voters, and I've been telling Council about the Speak Out Arizona activities, and that started as a part of the O'Connor House, the Sandra, Justice Sandra Day O'Connor House. And it's kind of gone over to the Arizona We Want, and it's become a part of Arizona We Want. So at 5:00 PM, we tried to have it when people could be off of work, if they wanted to attend. We're going to have an activity where we're going to talk about how the attendees or citizens can advise us and how we can increase citizen participation in all aspects of citizenship for Verde Valley residents. And the goal is to understand how government works and how citizen engagement builds communities and influences governance. And then Robin Bauer will be doing a lot of election activities, because the last day to register to vote is July 28th, I believe, and the primary is on August 26th. So we really want to get all the, it's nonpartisan, you know, get anybody of any party registered to vote. We also want to make sure that the independents, people who are registered with no party or independents, educate them that they can vote in the primary. So they just need to contact elections if they would like to vote in the primary. So all in all, it's been a very busy but rewarding couple of weeks. Yes, Mr. Garrison?
One thing I forgot to add is, Hezekiah Allen stopped by earlier today, and he pointed me to the City of Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce website, and they just posted a link today to an article that was done by Movoto, which is a national real estate company, and they did a study in Arizona, and came up with their list of the top 10 most exciting places to be in Arizona. And Cottonwood came in at number six on the list, above Chandler and some other heavy hitters. And if you pull up the article, they actually came up with a pretty good study on how they determined all this by restaurants, activities, outdoor events, nightlife, live music, all these different factors that played into that. And it was just really kind of neat to see somebody else describe Cottonwood as exciting, because having grown up here, that isn't a word I would necessarily equate with Cottonwood. So it was nice to see somebody else decide that what's going on here is the right thing and actually give us some national attention for it, so.
That's wonderful.
You get a chance to look it up.
Okay, Vice Mayor? It was on Channel 10 last night and on Channel 5 last night. Oh, it was. I didn't see that, but the way I found out was, a Facebook friend Facebooked me and said, "Look, look, Cottonwood's within number 10 of cities." So that was very cool. Thank you for remembering to bring that up. So the Cottonwood Chambers website is, just Google Cottonwood Chamber. Cottonwood Chamber, Cottonwood Chamber AZ.org. Okay.
It's on Facebook.
That's on Facebook, too. Our Facebook, the city's Facebook.
Great.
Which I didn't check today.
Yeah.
I was studying all day. So the city has a wonderful Facebook page. If you want to know what's happening anywhere in the city, or even in the, in the community, or even in the whole Verde Valley, just go on into Facebook and click on City of Cottonwood, and there's just a wealth of information. Every day, there's something new, lots of things, so. All right, thank you, everyone. So moving on to the next item, we have a presentation from the Old Town Mission, and we have the new, the brand-new, did I miss something? Somebody said something?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
I said he's not brand-new.
Oh, he's not brand-new? Well, he's been on the board a long time, I guess, but he's, he was recently appointed as the Director.
Yes, ma'am.
So we have Ron Dreyer. Did I say that right?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
And thank you, council members and manager, for the opportunity to come. I just was thinking about if we were appointed or selected as one of the six, the number six most exciting city. I think one of the most important rankings we can get is how we take care of the poor. But anyway, as a representative of the Old Town Mission, I do appreciate the opportunity to come. First, I know you're all familiar with the mission, in one way or another, but I have recently been appointed to the Executive Director of the mission. Just a little bit about me. I retired from active ministry in 2007 in Oklahoma, moved to Arizona, and thought we were basically in the good life. I was, I was appointed to be on the Board, or elected to be on the Board of the Old Town Mission back in December, and then recently was asked to become the Executive Director and take over. As most of you know, the Old Town Mission, for, for the last few years, has gone through some difficult times, and there've been some broken pieces, and we've, actually, the Board has made a lot of effort to try to fix those pieces, but not so successfully sometimes. And so they have given me the, the assignment of trying to step in and fix the broken pieces and restore the Old Town Mission to the positive place where we can actually make a difference in people's lives, and also be a positive influence for Cottonwood, for the City of Cottonwood and the Verde Valley. We realize that we have responsibilities in that, and we fully accept those responsibilities. The Old Town Mission has obviously been around for years, most of you are aware of that, but we're still doing a good job in helping a certain segment of our community. One thing, in fact, just for the figures of June that we've just completed, the Old Town Mission, we distributed groceries, in bags of groceries, to 3,268 households in the month of June. We were to provide lunch, and by the way, Mayor, thank you for joining us on July the 3rd.
Thank you for inviting me.
But we were provided, able to provide lunch, hot lunches, by the way, for 1,458 people. We gave 1,085 boxes of food out in the month of June, and we also provided clothing and showers to over 200 people in the month of June. So, so we're doing that, as most of you are probably aware, because of the advertising also. We're right in the middle of our backpack-to-school, back-to-school push for, for underprivileged children. And God willing, we intend to be able to provide over 600 children this year, underprivileged children, with backpacks and school supplies. That's so important when children are going back to school, that they don't have hand-me-downs and second-class citizen, because it's so important for their self-esteem. And as we're trying to provide children and be able to raise them in a positive attitude, a positive, excuse me, the positive community, I think it's really important that we take this step, and, and we're full, we're right in the middle of that push right now. That will culminate, by the way, this weekend is our big donation push, and if any of you would like to volunteer, we'd be more than happy to, to give you an opportunity to do that on this coming Friday and Saturday. But the donation day, that we actually provide goods for the children, will be August the 2nd, and we're looking forward to that. One of the things that I really feel as, as the Executive Director, is we are almost to, we're almost full up as far as utilizing our current, our current location, our current status with the thrift store and these kinds of things. And so what I really feel is important for the Old Town Mission, is to do what I'm calling, we're taking it to the streets. In other words, instead of, of the poor and those who are, by the way, the poor is not necessarily homeless anymore. A lot of times, we're talking about the working poor, and if you can only imagine yourselves of people that have jobs and work hard and maybe make eight, nine, $10 an hour, it's impossible to supply the needs for a family in that kind of condition with those kinds of dollars. And as our economy continues to rise, that becomes even more difficult. And this is where the Old Town Mission can step in and provide an assistance to people that are struggling to make ends meet. And no matter what happens with the economy, we know the economy's going down and, and all the needs are going up, but one thing's for sure, the Bible says, "The poor you have always with you." So no matter what we do, there's no way we're ever going to be able to eradicate the poor, no matter how well our communities are stationed or whatever. But the difference is going to be, if we can take care of the poor, not in taking care of, I don't mean that, but if we can provide an assistance for the poor, we can help that whole atmosphere. And the people who are assisted are less likely to become panhandlers on the street, are less likely to be thieving in small fast-food organizations and things like that, hang up. If we can take care of them in that way, they will actually, it will come back to the city, and I believe will be an actual positive thing. But the thing I wanted to, to bring up in a dash is, is that what I'm really trying to do as the Executive Director is institute an atmosphere of taking the mission to the streets. I mentioned that. One of the first things that we're doing in September is we are locating an area, let's say, of greatest need in the Cottonwood area, and we're taking a, a platform and, and PA system, and we're actually working with Bobby Lopez of, with, that has a young ministry for young people, and they're going to provide that day. By the way, we'll be flooding advertising in that area, letting them know that we're coming. But they'll be providing a 30 to 40-minute program for children with music and singing and dancing and, and kinds of puppets and things like that to attract them. But then, from that point on, we're also telling in the same advertising that all the parents can come out at that point, and we're prepared to take bags of groceries and provide to every family that's represented there. So it's our way of taking the mission, taking the help, taking Cottonwood's care and our compassion into the places where people really need it. In addition to that, you know, we feed here at the mission, but I wondered, I asked the question, "Well, if we only feed Monday through Friday, then I suppose poor people don't eat on Friday, on Saturday and Sunday." Well, obviously, that's ridiculous. So we have begun to develop a, a way of, of working with some of the other organizations So we have begun to develop a way of working with some of the other organizations in the community and providing sack lunches. And I myself have volunteered to come in on Saturday and Sunday and provide lunch sacks to those who come by between 12 o'clock and 12:45 on Saturday and Sunday. Another thing that we're going to do like that is identify areas of Cottonwood that have the most need, and we're going to begin a weekly distribution of food and lunch bags for them at that area. We're trying to define now through our own personal research about where are the eight most needy areas in the Cottonwood area. And then we're going to, through volunteers and even through our own staff, we're going to be going to those places on a weekly basis and providing the groceries for them and the sack lunches and things like that for them to have. It's just our way of really reaching out to the community, letting people know that there are people who care. We thank God for our donors, that actually, we need a lot more, to tell you the truth. But I really believe as we improve our serve, to take a tennis firm terminology from Wimbledon that just finished up, if we can increase our serve or improve our serve, people will begin to have the confidence again in the Old Town Mission that we are really reaching out to make a difference. And I believe we really can. We need your prayers, we need your advice, we need your ideas to help us develop how can we, that's one of the challenges I'm giving to the staff, is give me some creative ideas about how we can actually take our services out. We're limited by four walls and the doors, but we're not limited in the area of space. So give us some ideas, give us your creative thoughts on how we can make a difference. And with God's help and volunteers and contributions, we're going to be doing that. And again, I don't know if I said it or not, but what a joy it is to have my wife, Maureen, she's always there and all my biggest support, and I'm very grateful that she's here with us as well. But thank you, council people, and is that appropriate, council members?
Fine.
And Mayor, and Mayor, thank you for your time. And just know this, we want to be a positive influence on Cottonwood. And I really believe that we can be a positive influence. I realize that we're spending a lot of effort trying to dress up and trying to make the Old Town especially a tourist area and one, and I believe you're doing a great job at that. And we're glad, I'm glad that I have the privilege of participating in some of that. But we want you to know that we don't want to be a negative part of our community. We want to be a positive part. And if you'll help us with your ideas, with your counsel, with your advice, I know that together we can do that. So thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members, for your time, and we'll be around. And by the way, if any of you would ever consider coming down for lunch and letting me show you through the place, I would deem it a privilege and an honor. And all you have to do is call the mission, let us know you're coming. But anyway, we'd like to show you through, I'll buy you lunch, and we'll have a great time. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you.
Let me say before you step down, Ron?
Yes, Ron?
I'm sorry.
Mayor?
I just wanted to say to you that I appreciate your enthusiasm, your efforts. We've met before and talked before, of course. And I just appreciate what you're trying to do to serve our community very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I neglected to ask if there were questions or comments. I just, I knew I had 10 minutes and I probably exceeded it, so.
That's okay.
I did want to ask if, do you have any beds there at your shelter? Do you ever put homeless folks?
No.
No?
At this time, Tim, we do not. I think Catholic Charities has a few places. I'm not really positive on that. That's something that we would like to do, but obviously, that's down the road for us because that's going to take money, and we don't have that kind. But thank you for asking.
Is that in your future? I mean, five years out, do you suppose you might have?
Certainly, our future and our vision is expanding. Tim, to tell you the truth, I just got to town, but I can tell you that I served for almost 40 years on the Board of Directors for Fred Jordan Mission in Los Angeles, and that's a huge mission there that they do a lot all over LA County. And I also founded City Mission in Oklahoma City that I was president of and director of that for about 15 years. So there, our opportunities are limitless. As you know, as I mentioned, the poor are increasing daily, and the people who need help are increasing daily. So we can ignore it and let them become a major blight to our city, like some of our major cities in America have where they begin, it's almost, people are almost afraid to go because of the people that are approaching them things. Or we can make a difference and serve them and let them know how important they are to us. Thank you for asking. Is there anybody?
Any other questions? So I do want to thank you and Kelly and your other staff members, Darlene, and the gentleman that cooked.
Thank you.
It was just really fantastic to be invited. I had never been invited before, so I really appreciated getting to learn more about the mission and hearing Bobby Lopez speak, and his friend's daughter, Ari, also sang the National Anthem. And it was just such a wonderful, homey event for those people who are maybe going to go through the Fourth of July without a good square meal. And so we really appreciate you, and I thoroughly enjoyed the invitation and participating that day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You must come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So members of the public and members in TV land, if you can assist this Saturday, the 7th, the 18th, the 19th, this Saturday, this coming Saturday with an event, just call the Old Town Mission and volunteer. It's a good cause. Okay, the next item is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion or action per ARS 3843102H, and comments are limited to a five-minute time period. So would anyone like to speak to the Call to the Public on an item that's not on the If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move on to the minutes. Are there any comments on the minutes? They look good to me.
Move to approve, minutes.
Okay. So Mr. Garrison made a motion to approve, and Mr. Hadigee seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. First, we will have item number eight, the Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item, let's see, we're pulling, we're going to pull item number one. It had some changes in it, and so it will come back at a later date. Item number two is Resolution Number 2754, approving an agreement with the Northern Arizona Council of Governments for Community Service Block Grant and Social Services Block Grant Funds for the Cottonwood Area Transit System. Item number two is New Liquor License Application for Wei Shun Chen, owner of Bonsai Vistro, located at 747 South Main Street. Besides item one, are there any items that the council would like to pull for discussion? Are there any items that a member of the public would like to pull to have discussed? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve items two and three of the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Mr. Darlene seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2754 by title only.
Resolution Number 2754, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving an agreement with the Northern Arizona Council of Governments for the use of Community Service Block Grant Funds and Social Services Block Grant Funds for the Cottonwood Area Transit.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine is New Business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Ooh, I feel like I have to sneeze.
You too.
Item one is Resolution Number 2755, authorizing the acquisition of certain necessary public easements through purchase or by the exercise of power of eminent domain. Mr. Horton?
Madam Mayor, council members.
Okay, Mr. Darlene's going to declare a conflict.
Madam Mayor and council, to begin with, I think I'd note that although it's taken some time, we've been remarkably successful in obtaining the cooperation of adjoining landowners along the 12th Street project and securing the necessary easements and rights of way and other property interests to be able to proceed with the project, which, as the council knows, has been phased now. In anticipation of the second phase, and this is not at all unusual, we've hit a bit of a roadblock in terms of some property owners that have been reluctant, I think even more than to convey the easement that the city requires, that phase of the project, to really as effectively as the city would hope. So what our fondest hope and intent is, is that to, even though we may have to pursue eminent domain condemnation action where the government actually takes the property and gives just compensation, and then there's a discussion, actually, an adjudication of the value that's owed to the property owners, but this is a right that the government has in order to serve the public good. It's one that the government doesn't and should use very conservatively. But we will need to, we believe we need to at least initiate the process to hopefully engage the property owners in a discussion about a negotiated resolution so the project can proceed. That doesn't mean we won't have to actually pursue to completion a condemnation action, but we hope and expect, especially given the value of particular property interest, that it should come to that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Council?
We're talking about one property owner right now?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, that wasn't as clear as I could have made. Yeah, even though this is sort of written globally, generically, we're really talking, we're asking for authority to proceed with respect to several easements on one particular parcel of land, and that's owned by the Drakes. But it's two separated sidewalk easements, there's nothing to do with the roadway, actually. It's two sidewalk easements, a drainage easement so that water can drain over, and this is, we're talking about a very small portion of the property, by the way. And then a temporary construction easement so that the city's contractor can actually enter on the property and do the, yes, Hadigee's just one parcel.
You might have said this, why are they objecting to this again?
I'm not entirely sure. I've polled staff, and it's been Morgan that's really been reaching out to these folks. And he's a little puzzled, too, and I think he's gotten mixed messages and sort of uneven response. So there'll be a conversation, then there'll be a delay, and then there'll be a lack of communication and a lack of response. And this has been going on, and anybody else with more knowledge of this can weigh in. But my understanding is it's been going on for quite a while now, to the point where we just, oh, and most recently, we've learned that the Drakes have retained a condemnation attorney. So I think that was the signal to us that, oh gee, maybe they really don't want to talk about it.
Yeah, I saw that in there. So it seems like we really should go ahead with this. I mean, we made a promise to our citizens to finish 12th Street. We had numerous public meetings. Overwhelmingly, they wanted the design we came up with. I mean, we really did listen to the public, and they basically designed this to let one person hold it back.
And I know I speak for staff, and I believe I'm.
Hurts many people.
Articulating the council's view, and I say we do this, we take this kind of step very reluctantly. And when I reached out to condemnation council to help us move this process forward, he was pretty impressed that we'd gone this long. And I said, my 15-year history with the city, we've never done an adverse condemnation before, and he was kind of stunned.
Yeah.
Well, that says a lot about him, because this is not unusual. It's unusual for us because it's something we dialogue with our neighbors and we work with people, and, you know, we'll even reroute things or replan things if we can. So this is a step we don't take.
Yeah, we've been more than fair on this and patient. And again, we're inconveniencing a lot of people by letting one person hold it up. So have we explored every avenue in trying to communicate these people now that they have an attorney on board? Has that closed the door permanently?
Absolutely not. Matter of fact, the attorney we've engaged knows the attorney they've engaged, you know, and when I mentioned his name, he immediately, you know, used his nickname, and he's already reached out to him. And again, it's really, this is a formality that opens the door, actually, we hope, to much better and more fruitful dialogue. I can't offer any assurances about that, but this forecloses nothing.
Okay.
And Mayor and council members, I can add a little more detail to what Steve was talking about in terms of the effort that has been made to try and reach some kind of an agreement. You know, Morgan has been the point person, but there has been several meetings with all layers of staff. I have sat in on a couple of meetings. You know, we have offered many property improvements to try and minimize any impact to their property. You know, we would get a tentative agreement, and then the next day, that agreement was, you know, no longer acceptable. We finally had the easements we needed appraised, and along with the potential damages of the improvements we were making, which amounted to about $6,000. And the last action was, we said, "This is what we'll offer you for the easement, and otherwise, we're going to have to pursue legal action." And our initial thought, again, was that they were going to be happy with that and accept it. And then the last we heard is they had acquired a condemnation attorney. And so it kind of led us to the point now where, yeah, it's gone on and on and on, and it is one of those factors that have delayed the opportunity to bid this project as one project as opposed to dividing it up.
So do we get the feeling that it's a matter of money over everything else?
Councilman Hadigee, your guess is as good as mine. I mean, and I think the staff who've dealt with this, with this, these citizens, this particular couple would probably tell you the same thing. I don't know. Trying to get them to, get them pinned down on exactly what they wanted changed from day to day. I mean, it was that difficult to do.
I was wondering if a last-ditch effort between our attorney and their attorney to settle this before going to condemnation and bearing those costs would be a reasonable thing to do before pursuing this legal action.
I think if our council had thought that that might improve, he already has put in a call to him, I think he would have advised us. I think his advice to us was, let's pass this resolution, let's tee up and file the action. And that, in his experience, and he's done hundreds of these, is the time when people start to listen.
Mr. Ilinski?
Just a couple of questions. For how many months have we been in discussion with them on this property?
Oh, gosh, a long time. It's been at least a year.
Because Councilmember Garrison and I were invited by the group of the neighborhood a long time ago, and we sat right here and worked with staff to try to accommodate what they wanted.
I remember a meeting with Development Services that was probably going on a few years ago where we started talking about the acquisition of these properties, which I can't speak to exactly from the first engagement with this, with the set of property owners happened. This project's been on the boards, and we've been seeking these property interests for almost a couple of years.
And again, you know, this was one of, I think, 39 easements we needed. So, you know, while we were negotiating with them, we were also getting things done with the others. And, you know, as much effort as staff has made, and again, we sent our most accommodating staff member out there in Morgan Scott, and he made a gallant effort to try and appease them as much as was reasonably possible. And I think at this point... And I think at this point, it's just time to move on.
And so, second question, what happens if we do nothing? For what reason did they retain their condemnation attorney? In preparation for us doing the same, or?
We actually had retained local council who sent them a letter because that's all it took with a few holdouts where we did not have to and we didn't anticipate having to. Actually, there was one other parcel that we don't think we have to proceed in any sort of adversarial fashion, and we thought we might. And it turned out to be this one that's far the sticking point. But they received a letter from us saying, we urge you to please consider, you know, this offer, here's the appraisal, we'd like to pay you the appraised value, please either let us know that you'll accept that or let us know what will be acceptable. And that's the point that we learned they hired a combination.
So what, so I guess, again, what happens if we?
If we do nothing, we don't have this property interest. I don't know from an engineering perspective what happens to the project. We don't have a sidewalk easement, we don't have a drainage easement across this particular piece of project.
I mean, I just, I guess what I'm asking, or what I wonder, is if the condemnation attorney that they've hired isn't going to say, why did you hire me, and talk sense into them, and just say, why don't you work with, I mean, what's that person's job?
It boils down to money. I mean, well, I guess it could boil down to some sort of engineering feat. I don't know. I know there's an issue with the change in elevation that's required on that part of the project. But far more often than not, when you get into this kind of case, what you're talking about is compensation. What the Constitution talks about in the taking is just compensation. The government can't take private property without giving just compensation in the court. You know, can that be in the form of some kind of, you know, change to the property that minimizes or compensates for the alteration in their property? Perhaps, but almost invariably, it boils down to money.
So, you know, this is a council that really works hard to make everyone happy. I mean, we will go the extra mile and we'll wait things out. We've been waiting things out for two years. It's costing the citizens of Cottonwood more in engineering if we don't get moving. It's costing them more materials. We've already gone to a great expense in dividing up the project, and we've just done everything we can to accommodate this. And at some point, you have to stop, as Mr. Pratt said, and look at the health, welfare, and safety of the community. And knowing, you know, being able to go to bed and sleep at night because you knew you did everything you could to try to help and to try to work with this entity. So I just, you know, if you're weighing the good of the majority, which is what we have to do sometime, against the good of one, that you really did everything in two years that you could to try to accommodate what they wanted, I don't think there's any question for me about what the right thing to do is.
You know, and even our contracted engineer is amazed at the lengths we've gone to to try and do this as friendly as possible and accommodate these folks. And I think the other thing, and Steve can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the issue that goes to court is the issue about what is the compensation? What is the easement worth? Once we file condemnation and the judge determines that, yeah, these one group of people can't hold up the project, he'll award us the easement, then the battle is just how much is it worth?
That's almost exactly correct. The finding that has to be made is that this is an essential public purpose, that there's a public purpose to the taking. And in a case like this, there's.
And you get compensated at any help.
So then we get a preliminary order awarding the property interest to us, and the case proceeds if and as necessary on the issue of compensation.
And we move forward with the project.
And when you think about all of the streets we've done in the past five, 10 years, we've done Aspen, we've done 10th Street, we've done half of, we're working on half of 12th, we've done Mingus Avenue, we've done Mingus Avenue Extension with the county, we've done Willard Extension. This has never happened to us before. It's not like we haven't tried.
Well, and in some cases, and this is one of those cases where we can do it, where we've run into such resistance, we've actually gone back and redesigned the project so we don't need the easement.
Who's the road?
And in this case, that just isn't possible.
Yeah, we need to do this.
I mean, even on this, on this street, we redesigned somebody out of the project because she, there was this no way she was going to give us the easements we needed, and we could do it. But this particular piece, we can't do.
So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? If not, Mr. Pratt, I would entertain a motion.
Hang on one second.
Oh, yes?
Tell me again, if this is approved tonight, this just opens the door to be able to proceed with condemnation. This is not.
Absolutely. This is a legal predicate, and I think the way the resolution is written, and let me make this clear, you're authorized me to direct the actions of condemnation council, and unless I hear otherwise tonight, I would follow his advice to allow him to go ahead and file, and then, because in his experience, that's what opens the door to the dialogue. But are we going to, you know, start asking the court to schedule, you know, evidentiary hearings on the value? No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. In that case, I feel we should move forward with this issue then.
Thank you. Your questions are all very valid. So Mr. Pratt made the motion, I'd entertain a second. Second.
Second.
Or fourth. You know, I didn't really make the motion yet.
He hasn't made the motion.
He hasn't made it yet.
I moved to approve Resolution Number 2755, authorizing the acquisition of certain necessary public easements for the 12th Street Improvement Project by purchase or condemnation.
Second. Okay, Mr. Pratt did finally make the motion. I thought maybe I fell asleep or something. And the vice mayor seconded it, so any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Okay. So with one person having declared a conflict, we had Mr. Pratt, Mayor Jones, the vice mayor, Mr. Garrison, Mr. Hadigee vote yes, and Mr. Ilinski vote nay.
I guess I should probably just explain why I.
Yes, please, if you like.
I wasn't on board with, and I think I voted against, the splitting of the project into two phases, and I really felt like we should have gotten all these easements in place prior to beginning the project. I feel like there's too much pressure now to move forward because we want to try to combine project, the phases of the project simultaneously. And I just don't like the approach, and moreover, I don't like the concept of government taking land, and I don't, nobody here likes that concept at all. And I know this is, it doesn't, has, you know, none in my experience has ever practiced this before, but I'm just, just don't like it.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments, and the rest of the council explained that for the good of all, that I think that's why they were, after many questions, why they went ahead and voted yes. So, thank you. Okay, the next item is canceling the August 19th, 2014 meeting due to council attending the Annual League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference, August 19th through 22nd of 2014.
I will move to cancel the August 19th meeting.
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Garrison made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed. I think y'all ought to come back and go to the meeting. Strike that one.
Well, I'm not going, so maybe Reuben and I could sit here and have a meeting.
I'm not attending this year either, so.
So maybe we could, we do have a skeleton crew who is attending this year, so maybe the rest of us could participate by phone or something. Okay, so if we do have items that come up, we'll probably have to have a special meeting in August, but right now.
Read the resolution.
Okay. City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2755 by title only.
Resolution Number 2755, a resolution of the Mayor, City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acquisition of easement interest for the city's 12th Street project through purchase or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain. Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Claims and adjustments?
Will we pay the claims?
Checking. Okay, so Mr. Ilinski made a motion to pay the claims, and the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Second.
The mayor made the motion, who was first seconding it? Mr. Pratt seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.